The very first night that I came out, after Linda called me, I came from my house, and I went to the site, and I posted a stop work order that night.
With the mayor by your side?
No, he's not there.
Did you post that stop work order because the mayor told you to?
No, I put that stop work order up because I'm the building official.
What was the mayor doing there with you?
To observe. He did nothing else.
Who told him to go to observe?
I asked him if he would like to go observe.
Why would you even be talking to him about this?
Because I have a right to have him go on-site if I want to.
When did you take his pictures of exhibits to the jury?
You'd have to look up the timeline on emails that I sent Linda the pictures.
Oh, there's emails between you and Linda about this property?
I just sent her emails saying what I saw.
Were there lawyers involved in those emails?
No.
So it just be emails between you and Linda about this property?
Mm-hmm.
And you told her what you observed and so?
Yep.
And that would tell us what days you took these pictures?
Absolutely.
You don't have an independent recollection of what days you took these pictures?
I've been out there multiple times.
I didn't ask you that, really.
No, I don't have a specific date for recollection of the pictures.
Did you take them before you put the stop work notice in?
I took them the night I put the stop work order up, the pictures you have in your hand.
Okay.
Those pictures, they were taken.
So you took exhibits three and four on the day you put the stop work notice in? And do you remember the day you put the stop work notice in?
May 10th. Whatever they called it.
You're referring to Linda, but I'm-
Mr. Ackles, where do we go?
I don't know why I'm getting, I feel like I'm being under trial.
But the question-
I'm just stating the facts, that's what I saw.
Your appeal was you didn't need a permit. Going round and round about the dates that he took the pictures, is that Jermaine to your-
Yes, it is.
-your appeal, who said that the, that they didn't need a permit?
With all due respect, I'll just tell you the relevance of this line of question. My client's first meeting with you, when he was at the, here getting a permit in the very beginning of this property, you said to him, and he will testify to that, that you wanted to build out this property for him, or have someone do it at your designation? And he said, "No, I've been in this business for all my life, I'm gonna do it myself." The second time he met with you, Mr. Mayor, you scolded him. You told him nothing's gonna happen on this property unless it goes through you. You threatened him with that, "Why is your port-alette sitting on the street? It's impermissible." There's port-aletste all through this city, on the street. You told him you'll go to the Supreme Court over it, and he's done it the past?
Again, I don't-
And I'm about to make my point.
This is Jermaine to, "Do you need a permit or not?"
No.
That's your appeal.
No, but-
Your appeal states that you don't need a permit.
There's retaining walls all over this city, just like this, that didn't get permitted. And that's part of what we're gonna show, but what we wanna show is that you have a conflict, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect, you offered a personal interest in this property, this first meeting with you, and because he rejected you, we believe that has influenced your behavior.
That's preposterous, that's amazing.
It may be, but we, and you're the only one that seems to be directing questions and trying to eliminate my ability to keep questioning the witness.
I'm trying to get out of here before midnight, so-
I'm trying to get you out.
You're asking about dates and dates. Your appeal letter states that you do not believe that you have a permit. Permit is not-
Was this fellow told my client's representatives that did not get a permit to build a four-foot-lane-shaped wall?
Okay, is that, if that's your appeal, then that should be the line of your appeal.
I hear you.
What difference does it make, what day you took the pictures?
They're selective enforcement, I'm about to go through the code with him. They're selective enforcement of this code targeting this individual resident, or homeowner, or property owner. And we think it's done by the direction of you.
Okay.
With all due respect to your office, and we think that, partner, you should recuse yourself from any further discussion or communications on this appeal. Otherwise, it's a painted appeal.
Okay.
So I'm gonna continue with that line of question. Why were you measuring four feet? Because a four-foot wall would be okay, right?
It'd have to be of an engineered design.
Where does that say that? Where does it say that in the state code?
For a 4.4, designed for safety. 4.4. If it's less than that, it doesn't have to be. Let's look at engineered design.
Let's look at 105.1. It says, "Any owner or authorized agent who intends to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, demolish, or change the occupancy of a building or structure." Well, this is not that, is it?
No.
Or to erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert, or replace any electrical, gas, mechanical, or plumbing system. This isn't any of those, is it?
No.
The installation of which is regulated by the state code. It has to get a permit, so 105.1 does not apply to this wall, does it?
Yes, it does.
Well, I just read it, what part of 105.1 applies to this wall?
That's permits, sir.
Right.
It does not go into specifics. If you put in a, you like system, would you have to have a permit?
I'm simply saying-
Does that say anything, Eric?
I'm saying, anywhere in 105.1 that we just read, that says in these events you have to have a permit, are the walls on this property, 474 Peninsula, a part of, any to have anything to build with it?
Building is part of, you see that?
It's, because he's not constructing, enlarging, or building- A building or structure to erect, install, or repair, it's not-
Structure is anything that is built. Okay? So a retaining wall, it was built.
You're saying a retaining wall is a structure?
Yes, it is.
And so every single retaining wall in this city has to get a permit?
If it meets the designs of 105.2.
105-
If you go into work that is exempt, please read that again, sir. That is retaining walls that are not over four foot in height. Measured from the bottom of the footing, which is why I was trying to get to the bottom of the footing. Unless supporting a surcharge.
Okay.
So if you put up a four-foot wall, and it doesn't have any surcharge on any side, it doesn't have to have a permit. There's others in town exactly like that. It's not required. On this, it has surcharge on each side. Would you agree with that?
No, but let me ask you-
So dirt on the, yeah, dirt that's being held up is not surcharged?
Let me ask you this question. If it had surcharge on each side, that you knew from observation, that you've already testified to, right?
Yeah.
Why would you need to measure whether it was over four feet?
I measured everything as close as I can.
Isn't it fact that you measured it to see if it was over four feet, because if it wasn't, you're making a soft word?
I was going to measure it to see if it had to have an engineered design. If it's two foot, it's not holding up surcharge, you don't have to have a design. You could put rocks, and nothing is going to be an issue.
Isn't, and for all of that analysis, you don't need to measure it?
Well, it's kinda good to measure everything you do. I measure everything.
Isn't the fact that Mr. Cook and Crystal told you at that meeting? Look, I wanna get the dates right. You said you talked to Linda on May 10th. Isn't it a fact that you posted this property stop work on May 14th?
I don't remember the date. I remember putting up a-
I take it back, I think you did do it on May 10th. When did you meet with the, with the, Mr. Cook and Chris, when did you meet with that?
Well, so it's the next day. I'd have to look at emails.
And were you the only one present in the city that met with them?
Met with them, with our mayor, Mark Vargas.
Okay, and did you hear the mayor say to Mr. Cook and Crystal that, that anything that I do on this property has to be approved by him?
I don't remember him saying anything like that. Said you have to pull a permit, it has to be inspected. If it's approved, you move forward. If it's not approved, it's code violation, you fix it.
Did you hear him complaining about a porta potty on the street?
There was a porta potty on the street, and you're not allowed on the street.
Did you hear my question? Did you hear my question?
Go ahead.
Did you hear the mayor say anything to Mr. Cook and Crystal about a porta potty on the street in that?
There was- That was brought up in the meeting, yes.
So you did hear the mayor say something?
Yes.
Are there porta potties on the street in other construction sites?
Not in my world. If it's there, I tell them to move it. Everybody's the same.
Did you later cite this property for dumping rocks and dirt on the street in front of?
Yes.
Why'd you do that?
Because I took pictures, and then we had more stuff brought on-site.
And who-
And I got an email from you saying, "We didn't do that." What, that's neither here nor there.
How did you draw the conclusion that that rock and dirt-
I have, I have-
Let me finish.
I have no mind of-
How did you draw the conclusion that Mr. Cook put that rock and dirt on the street?
His property.
It's in front of his property?
No, there was a big pile of rock brought down on the property. There were two piles, one looks like dirt or some kind of a mulch. Up on the street, down along the south wall, I have a picture that I took the first time I was there, and then at a later date, there's a pile of rock.
Pile of rock on the street?
No, down on the property, up by the south wall. But you don't wanna see any of the pictures.
Well, I haven't seen them.
No.
But you wrote him and said, "Move your dirt," and he stuck that stop work. Did you know it wasn't his?
It doesn't matter, it's off right in front of his property. I'm gonna say to anybody, "Get it off the property."
Is it in front of his property, not on his property?
The property is a part of the property, in my-
What's the thing about the retaining wall?
And I don't know why we're going here, when you didn't get a permit.
Well, who asked you to? Did you have a conversation with the mayor about sending Mr. Cook that second?
Absolutely not.
Conversation with Ms. Asbell?
No.
Nobody, you spoke to no one?
I drive by, every time I come into town, from the day that started, take a drive by, everything's good, no work. I'm looking for workers. So I see two piles, and another pile down on the property, I'm gonna take pictures.
Did you communicate with Ms. Asbell about the rocks she planted on the property, right in front of the property?
After I observed them.
Did you communicate with her about sending Cook that second time?
No. I just said, "Please get a hold of Mr. Cook, please get it off the street."
So you wrote an email to Ms. Asbell, and she forwarded it to-
I directed her to contact, "Please remove whatever was on the street."
Did you talk to the mayor about that?
No.
At all?
No.
Do you have time until right now?
No.
Okay.
One day at a time.
Can you pour concrete in this city without a permit? In any way, shape, or form?
The only thing that we'll allow to be poured would be a small, 240, I think it's 50 square foot, there's an order, plus 50 square feet, say like patio behind the house.
You can pour a four-foot retaining wall that doesn't have the surcharge or anything, without a permit?
You can build a two-foot retaining wall without a permit, without surcharge on either side.
Well, you just read 105.2, and it says four feet, doesn't it?
It says four feet.
Okay, so you can build a four-foot retaining wall without surcharge, without a permit, correct?
Without an engineered design. I don't think you understand the difference.
Well, maybe I don't, I'm just asking about a permit right now.
Yep, it would require a permit.
A four-foot retaining wall without a surcharge requires a permit, despite what the law top two says?
With over 24 inches of surcharge. Please refer to section- Retaining walls, 4.4, retaining walls that are not laterally supported at the top. And that retain in excess of 24 inches of unbalanced fill, dirt, shall be designed to ensure stability against overturning, sliding, excessive foundation pressures, and water uplift. Retaining walls shall be designed for a safety factor of 1.5 against lateral sliding and overturning.
Did you cite that section in your letter to Mr. Cook?
I'd have to look at my letters.
That's in your-
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about. Said he needed a permit, they didn't pull a permit.
Isn't the fact-
That's why we're here tonight.
Isn't the fact that in your letter to Mr. Cook, in June 4th, June 2019, you said his action violated Section 105.1 of the Lakewood Village Residential Code 1611?
That's where it starts, 105 covers the whole section.
Oh, it doesn't?
Yes.
Is there a 105.2?
Yeah, there's a 105.3, and you have a-
You didn't cite any of those sections, did you?
No.
So the question before this panel is, are you accurate when you say he violated the law?
I feel I'm very accurate, because it is the code section.
Did you cite, should you have cited a different section, you referred to all these other sections?
Not necessarily.
Okay. How would he know what section is violated if you don't cite the right section?
How would he know that he comes into a small town and just starts pouring yards and yards of concrete without pulling a permit? My question is, why didn't you just come to me? Talk to me.
Did he tell you?
You go to Linda and ask her?
We're gonna have our witnesses who said and did that. Did he tell you at your meeting with the mayor, Mr. Cook and Crystal, that they went to Linda and asked her if it would be okay to build this retaining wall, and she says, "As long as it's not four feet"?
She's not the code official.
You just said, "Go to Linda"?
No, she, I said, "He went to Linda, he didn't come to me."
All right, is that what we're hearing?
I'm just stating facts. Didn't pull a permit.
Well, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so, that's it?
That's all I have for this witness, I'm about to put my case on it, if that's what we're ready to do.
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to introduce myself, because I didn't know what the plan was.
So, Steve, you can, you can sit down, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, you're-
Steve, bro. Not close, you're right.
Steve, yeah, sit down.
So, just a very quick introduction of who I am, because a lawyer shows up, and that's not a good day necessarily. My name's Joe Ackles. I, 25 seconds of my family history. Both my grandfathers came over on a boat from London. Little boys by themselves separately. And imagine how bad things were with your little boy on the boat going across the ocean today, or in 1905. One of them went to Mobile, Alabama, the other was in Dallas, Texas. The one in Dallas grew up and sold chickens for a living. Downtown Dallas on Pearl Street, Ackles poultry. My father was an only child, he dressed and cleaned and delivered chickens most of his young adult life. And he went off to the war, he came back, he could go to SMU Law School and get a degree in two and a half years, and medical school was gonna take five, so he took law school. Graduated, hung his shingle in '48, married my mother in '49, had ten kids later. Seven of us followed my father's lead, went to SMU Law School. Five of us worked with him until he died in 2006. I work with, there's four brothers, a sister, and four from the next generation that joined us. There are nine Ackles at Ackles, my Ackles. I'm a native Texan, a native Dallasite, and I thank the grace of God that I'm here and not where we came from. However, my-
Is the expectation we all go around and introduce ourselves, all our family history now?
That would be fine with me.
All right, let's roll on, I'd rather go home.
Well, I just wanted to let you know who I was, and I'm not just some guy swinging a stick. My client, Brad Cook, I've known for about a decade. He's an honest, decent man, who works really hard for a living. He wants to be a good neighbor and a friend of this council. He wants to build a home here. It didn't start well, and he's trying to do everything by the book. And I wanna introduce Brad, and let him tell you his story, and then I'll follow up with whatever else we need to present. Brad?
Some of you, I have not had, I've had a chance to meet Commander Vargas and Mr. Freeman. My interaction with the, with the town Lakewood started in May of, I'm sorry, early 2017, when I started looking at the property out here, and I had actually come in to talk to them about the property. The house was a distressed house, and we were putting a bid in on it. So, obviously, the excitement by Linda was there, that somebody was interested and excited about coming in and purchasing this lot and cleaning it up. So, that was the first experience I had with actually coming in and talking to the city Lakewood. And I had come in one day, and I had met Mayor Vargas, and of course, I told him we were looking at the property. And he had mentioned that he had a builder, he built, he had all kinds of experience. And I told him, well, we were gonna be building this ourselves, and of course, he interested in telling me, you know, how the city's run, and, you know, strict guidelines, real strong standard codes, which, I understand those codes. I've been in construction for 35 years, so been pouring concrete since 1982. Certainly understand how to pull a permit. Certainly understand when I walk into a city, if I'm not talking with the right person, generally, they direct me to the right person. So if I trust somebody, and they tell me, "You can do it here," or, "You can pull your permit here," and I pull a permit there, generally, that's where I go back to until they tell me something that I'm about. There's a standard criteria where you have a list of, you know, what you do with a four-foot wall, what you do with a non-four-foot wall, or what you do with a landscape wall, non-landscape wall. I think we can all drive the neighborhoods and understand. There's obviously some question about walls and how they go. And our objective was, we wanted to put in a landscape wall, made that very clear. We had no intention of putting a structural wall in. So, here we are. We did our demo back in 2017 on the lot, and we pulled a grading permit in 2019. So, during that demo, we discovered a lot of debris. It appeared that somebody that went in and done a lot of foundation repair had added much concrete to the site very deep. And of course, I talked to Linda about that, we pulled the grading permit. The issues we were having about the additional trash and materials that were buried below grade, that we didn't know about. So, we knew that we're gonna have to pass some extra labor on-site to deal with all that trash and debris. And we also talked to, we had come down and talked to the city about, did they need any dirt? Our understanding was, the city would accept the dirt. We told them, "Clean the dirt, clean the trash out." So we had a pretty good amount of people on-site doing this. Generally, when we have more than a couple of people on-site, we put a porta potty on-site. That's pretty standard in my 30-plus years of construction. We don't want people running around peeing at the neighbors' house. Now, Mr. Vargas told me that that was crazy. He'd never heard such a thing, and Steve, you'll verify this. He'd never heard such a thing as a grading permit that had a porta potty, which I've never heard that before in my experience, but then again, I'm not gonna question your experience. So, then we talked about concrete. You can't pour any concrete on-site, you can't touch anything on-site. Well, frankly, we came, and we asked about grading permit. The person that issued the grading permit, then we came, and she issued the grading permit. She was understanding what we were asking. I have two people that came in and represented themselves. Mr. Freeman was not here, obviously. And my understanding, she did not direct either individual to a different individual in regards to this grading permit and what can be done under this grading permit. So, if we can't get, we, if we're told anything under four foot, top to bottom, bottom footing, it was very clear, bottom footing to top of a wall, four foot, you don't need a permit. Now, that's changed tonight. Tonight now, it's two foot from top of a wall to final grade. Final grade. Everybody knows what final grade is. Final grade is when you're finished grading. So you can't finish grading if you have a stop work order. So basically, you're telling me, if I put two foot of dirt, your tape measure changes. There's no surcharge, and we don't even need to be here. Is that why I'm here? That's why I'm here. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding what is being said, but I'm gonna leave that to Jill to get to bottom of that, because frankly, I think it's ridiculous. I came to a meeting on Monday, the day we got the stop work notice, and we showed up on-site. And I came on good faith, okay? And I was, you were the rudest mayor, you were the rudest public official that I've ever met in 35 years. Now, I told Steve, "I don't want any animosity, I don't understand." You started chewing on my daughter, very disrespectful. So I don't, I was at a loss. So I said, "Look, we're not finished. When you guys make your assessment, I'll tell you what we typically do. And when we're getting, when we understand what you want, it'll be very simple, and it'll be very easy to get there." We have 150-plus foot of wall, and we're talking about a couple of feet over a quarter of an inch? Or are we talking about 100 foot that's over four foot? 150 foot that's over four foot? Not very clear, very vague. Let's fuzzy up the map, let's fuzzy up the pictures, let's take a picture of the wall, let's not analyze the whole wall, let's not, let's not do a thorough analysis. Let's just pick the worst spot and say it's all bad. I don't get that. Been doing this a long time. I've poured many, many, many walls, limited thousands, that we have not got a grip under four foot. And I can tell you, if this is a criteria, and my career is gonna be judged based on this event, where you're attacking me, and you're attacking me, and you're attacking my character, and my employees and consultants, it's unbelievable to me. It really is. And so my position is, I'm gonna stay very, very firm. I feel I'm in the right. I can take you to location after location after location, and surcharge after surcharge after surcharge, we can analyze. And I'm gonna tell you, when I get to finish this wall, okay? When I get to finish it, there won't be any question as to what the surcharge is. You told me, Mr. Mayor, "I need your building plans, I need your final elevation, so I can see what we're doing. See where we're gonna be." I told you, if you want us to put dirt out there and fill, finish it, finish the grade, I'll put the grade right where you want it. No, no, it's 90 days. 90 days, I get this here. You don't give me nothing, you don't give me no pictures, you withhold everything. I just don't get it. We're talking 90 days, 90 days. We're all here because of this, and you're worried about what time you get home? I'm sorry, I meant 90 days of dealing with this crap. So I'm not worried about five extra minutes. It's just unbelievable. Yeah.
Mark Cook, Chuck Flippin?
Yeah.
Did Brad accurately describe your meeting with Linda, that you could put up any more over the court?
Yes, yes.
Crystal, did your dad accurately describe the meeting y'all had with the mayor?
Yes.
Tie this up. I will offer a June 14th letter that Mr. Freeman sent to my client. I don't have, I wish I knew I could do that, I would send it all here to Linda in advance, and she could open it up. Here it is, to the council. In this letter, he says- I don't know which is in your packet.
It's in G2D, and we'll go to page 4 of G2D.
Okay, thank you. All, you've got a lot of stuff in your packet I haven't seen, and I wouldn't know how to represent my client and have a fair day at this tribunal in defending him without even knowing what the evidence is. But anyway, if you look at the, would you put that up, please, Linda?
I will, I was just gonna know real quick.
Okay.
Our packet is online, if you wanna pull it from-
I'll get that, I guess, if you all have a couple of them. Okay, so the opening sentence is, "On your property, 474 Peninsula, Lot 19 YK, Lakewood Village, two concrete retaining walls were constructed without a permit. This action is in violation of Chapter 1, Section R105.1 of the Lakewood Village Residential Code 1611." That's just not true. It does not violate that statute, that ordinance. He's telling you today, it's 105.2 and some sub-section, but he didn't quote that here in this letter. And I submit, this is the appeal. The appeal is that this letter is wrong, and it should be rescinded. And if he wants to argue that another section applies and send another stop another's letter, but I think that's backwards. If you look at that retaining wall, the pictures he provided you, it goes to a point. It puts a slight elevation of 150 feet, both of them, and he measured the point. And he concluded the point is a quarter of an inch off. And I submit, they're not finished. If somebody would come out and says, "The point's a quarter of an inch off, or the grade's wrong," let me fix that. That's what Brad has said. I'm sorry for the frustration from all of us, but we feel that Mr. Mayor, again, with all due respect to your office, but you have personally insinuated yourself into this situation, and you have, you personally had an interest in his property, a financial interest, by saying you wanted to build it out, you told him that. And for you to take any action on this property, including this appeal, you should, you should abstain. You should withdraw yourself from it because you have a personal, your personal conduct is involved. If you don't do that, uh, and this council does not grant our appeal and, and reverse this decision. I don't think we have any choices but to take a look, a real hard look at what was stuck here. Uh, we didn't get any of the evidence and we'll have to follow that up.
Can, can I interrupt real quick? It's so unclear. Does the mayor have a vote?
No, the mayor's not voting.
Thank you. So the mayor is not going to.
Okay, and he shouldn't have any influence. He shouldn't have been talking about the videos.
I want to make sure you understood.
I, I appreciate that. Now I'm happy to answer any questions, but the, um, I think conclusion, uh, we asked you to grant the appeal and you reversed the decision of the city inspector. That his, his letter is wrong and it should be, uh, the block stop, it should be, uh, eliminated. And we thank you for your time. I know everybody's got families and thank you for the indulgence. It's our, our position.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, so now we're going to, uh, to discuss it. I'd like to spotlight a couple of things here. I understand your frustration and what we want to do here is we want to try to be fair. The, the notion of trying to silence me by fabricating a lie that I have some financial interest in and been done before, that's, that's just silly. That's, that's been done in the past. I don't have financial interests if I am trying to lie equals my, that was, that's silly. So let's, uh, let's take a look. Clint, could you put up the building permit? So, you know, one of the frustrations, I've, I've been at this thirteen years and, you know, one of the frustrations that we run into is when we have miscommunication. And Brad, if, if, if you think this is, is personal, it's not. I, I'm not going to say you deliberately misled, deliberately lied, deliberately. I'm, I'm not going to say that because it's, it's a miscommunication.
For ninety days.
Okay, it's a, well.
For ninety days, it's a miscommunication. Got it. I'm.
Okay, so if you scroll down, Clint, could you show me the actual drawing? So this is, this is the drawing. This is what was submitted. Now the issue with this is, this is, this is a grading permit. And right over here in the green, it says silt fence. So this says there's going to be a silt fence here. Well, I think everybody knows, a silt fence is put on grades. You put a silt fence typically there because you don't want runoff. So if you're adding dirt, you don't want the runoff on a plant to go in the lake, so most construction would put silt fence around. So this diagram is telling us there's going to be a silt fence here. So the first confusion is, that's not where the silt fence. Clint, did you upload those pictures?